Tammy, are you ready? Becky, are you ready? Joe, are you ready? Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM, Tuesday, May 27, 2025. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Couple of reminders. We reserve the right to enter a closed session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the board. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners also reserves the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the parties involved. We will be following the Open Meetings Act with amendments that is posted at the entrance to the room. At 9:30, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meeting Act with amendments. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Hugley, if you would, please.
Sure, if you'd join me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we just would ask that you be with us today in our deliberations. That we are truly blessed in this country to have the many bounties that we have. Those things don't come without a price. And if we can just remember Memorial Day, it's nice to have the services and have those that actually paid the ultimate price be recognized. I'd ask that you be with their families. That you continue to bless all of those that serve in our military, our armed forces, that give us these many freedoms that sometimes we take for granted. I want to thank you especially for these wonderful rains we've been having. It's really kind of a God send to our farmers and ranchers and their production and both livestock and crops. And I'd just ask that you be with this, with a little bit of wisdom during the, our meeting today. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Just a reminder, Commissioner Hugley, the mugs in the morning will be on Thursday this week instead of this morning because we're meeting this morning.
Thank you.
Next, if you've had a opportunity to review the minutes from the May 19 meeting, I would seek a motion.
Chair, I would make that motion to approve those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on May 19, 2025.
Second.
The motion by Woodruff and a second by Hugley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Item three is consider claims and treasurers receipts.
Chair, it would be my motion that we approve the claims and treasurers receipts presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brunz and a second by Commissioner Hugley. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Brunz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
We will now receive an order filed, a fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
Chair, I would make that motion that we authorize, or that we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff in the amount of $1,304.44.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Final item on the consent agenda is authorizing the chair to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Great Plains Communications.
Morning. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. This is for a fiber bore starting on Kramer Road underneath Smith Road into a new residence up in the northeast part of the county.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning.
The fiber doesn't start on Garfield and come, obviously doesn't come up from the south.
They said they have a, they already have fiber there on Kramer, so.
Oh, they're just gonna.
They're just gonna tie onto what's existing there and then bore underneath Smith for that.
Going to that hole there.
Yeah.
I got you.
I do have a check here in the amount of $206.57.
How deep do they bore those? I'm sure it says, but it's supposed to be 42, right?
Yeah, they're at least 42. A lot of times when they bore, they're quite a bit deeper than that, yeah.
It'd be my motion to approve this. Permit for occupying the county road right-of-way for fiber optic install for the Smith farm. Authorize the chair to sign. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
You said it was just on.
Yeah, it's just a reminder, I forgot what we decided what happened before we. There's some behind there for you to sign through.
That's my thing from Lefander's Body Shop for my car I took in. I pushed the guts in mine.
We're not, we're not paying that invoice for you, Joe.
I was like, there's no point in talking to it, so.
I think there's another one like that, too. Another way to do that for them. Shouldn't have said anything, maybe I could run out through. Excuse me.
Bless you. It is 9:15. The agenda item before us is a public hearing to receive comments regarding a community development block grant, or CDBG, Tourism Development Grant for the Las Manitas Community Advocates Project. Good morning.
Good morning.
At this time, I will open the hearing. We are here to receive public comment concerning the project that the county has agreed to be the pass-through for the Las Manitas. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, yes.
Very good. Project. So at this time, Addie and Emma, if you have any materials that you would like to offer up for the record.
Alrighty. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Emma Castor and I serve as an economic developer with West Central Nebraska Development District. It is a privilege to address you today on behalf of Las Manitas Community Advocates, a dedicated organization committed to fostering community engagement and economic opportunity in North Platte. We extend our sincere gratitude to the commissioners for your role as the pastor entity facilitating the advancement of this initiative. Your support is instrumental in bringing the vision to fruition. This project represents a significant investment in the well-being and prosperity of the residents. By supporting small businesses, cultural programming, and public gathering spaces, we are working toward a stronger, more connected, and economically vibrant community. We appreciate the public's engagement in this process and look forward to advancing this project for the benefit of North Platte and beyond. Thank you.
And if I may pass this around, just to give us a seat.
Addie, if you would like to announce your name.
Oh, yes, of course, sorry. My name's Addie Dobbins, Director of Las Manitas Community Advocates. Thank you so much for allowing us to come here and show this to you guys. So this is the updated floor plan, if you will. We haven't spent any money just yet to get an architect or any of that. We're waiting for finalization of the funding to do that. But this is kind of, this puts a real, I don't know. It's a visual. Yes, thank you. A visual for you guys.
Very good. We will receive that map into the official record for the public hearing. Is that the only materials that you have to present today?
It is, yes.
Very good.
Yeah, so if it's, so the.
Railroad tracks.
Yep, the railroad tracks. And then so the bridge, the poplar by dock is right on the left side there. Yep.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I can't remember if it was brought up in a previous discussion on this, but that property and with that building kind of situated as close as it is toward the tracks, is this in the railroad right-of-way? Has there been, and if it is, has there been conversations with the railroad on this?
Yeah, so the railroad, what they told us was to be 50 feet, to build a privacy fence 50 feet away from the tracks. Besides that, that's the only concern that they had with it.
The visual is just kind of to show where the railroad tracks are.
Yep.
So if I recall from our previous meeting, you guys have engaged the railroad. They have a long-term lease agreement in place.
Yes, so right now.
For the property.
Yeah, so right now it's a five-year lease. And then we'll just renew that every five years.
Okay. At this time, if there's no further questions from the board, I will open the floor to the general public. Is there anybody in the, in the audience that would like to speak to the Las Manitas project?
Thank you.
Very good. So since there are no opponents to the project, I will now open the floor for proponents. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to supporting the project? If you'd like to come up and sign in and announce your name?
Sorry, my name doesn't fit in the whole.
I have one of those, too, Mackenzie.
My name is Mackenzie Fernandez. I'm with Las Manitas. Nancy is also my sister-in-law. So I'd like to say first off, I think that this is going to be a great opportunity to, to involve people of every background. It gives people who don't have a ch- It gives people who don't have a chance or the funding to open a business. And as someone who literally started selling food from my kitchen to having my own storefront restaurant here on the Canteen District, that's a lot of work, it's a lot of believing in yourself, and sometimes it can be really quick to give up on those dreams. I think this business incubator is really good for anybody here who's trying to give back to local economy, especially when it's, when it comes down to giving people what they don't have here, you know? Also with the stores, the hydroponics, we do have people that are volunteering their time to help us educate ourselves. There's a guy, what's his name, Jake or Josh? His name is Josh Wakefield. He's volunteered to give us his time. He says he's had years and years of hydroponics with him and his dad. They did it themselves. So, we're getting a lot of education, and these are also things that we can teach our community to do as well, as if, you know, they want to start their own hydroponics or something like that. Like, any information that we gain, we want to share with our community, we'll want to give back. So, that way our community is strong. And again, the, the economical benefits of this, I go out of town often to buy, you know, produce, things that I can't find here, and a lot of that stuff is just, you know, cultural things, whether it's, you know, like I said, produce, groceries. Those kind of things are important to keep a community thriving, you know, I, I believe. And especially if they're leaving and going to another county to spend that money. But, again, I'm not very good at giving speeches, but I really do think that it's, it's going to benefit our community greatly, and this is going to give lots of people a chance to start, you know, giving back to the economy, fulfilling their dreams, being self-sufficient, you know? And me being able to be self-sufficient, I'm able to give all the time I can to my kids. And I felt that that's benefited my kids greatly, and it's helped improve them with how they've been in school, because their attitudes are better. So, I think that there's just like a lot of things that go into that that'll affect a lot of people differently in a positive way. So, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you so much for your time.
Very good, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of Las Manitas? With that, I will close the, this portion of the public hearing. I would ask for a motion for that.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff. Hughley. Williams.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Our final item for this is discuss and consider adoption of Resolution Number 2025-11, authorizing the chief elected official to sign the application for CDBG funds. That was in our packets. Emma, would you like to speak to the resolution? It's pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, it's very, just Board Chair Michael would be able to sign on behalf of us and LEC.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to we adopt Resolution Number 2025-11 and authorize to yourself as the chief elected official to sign the application for CDBG funds.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hughley and a second by Commissioner Williams. Any other questions or discussion?
Just for the record that this is a pass-through, that this doesn't obligate county funding for this project, and really hope that all is going well with fundraising efforts and that you accomplish your task ahead of you. So, it's going to be great, it's going to be great for the entire community.
I would echo that, Commissioner Brunz. Thank you for bringing this project. You guys have done a lot of work in already raising the matching funds necessary for the most part. So, I've seen it go from, you know, a pretty simple idea to transitioning into this wonderful project. So, I will be happy to sign this for you guys and look forward to continuing working with you on it. Roll call, please. Thank you.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
I can't wait to get updates.
What's happening?
I can't wait to get updates.
While we're waiting for our next agenda item, Emma and myself and Becky participated in a conference call Friday morning concerning the project. So, you guys have a lot of people searching for good fits, and I, I really see this moving along pretty quickly for you. So, very exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emma.
Okay.
Thanks, Addie. Mackenzie, see you guys later. It is nine thirty. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization following the Open Meeting Act with amendments which is posted at the entrance to this room. The first order of business as the Board of Equalization is to approve the minutes of last week's meeting.
Madam Chair, would move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting that was held on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
We will now do certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the County Assessor Julie Stinger.
Morning.
Good morning, Julie.
Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. We have one personal property and just one real estate, I believe it's an acceleration of a mobile. It's moving to a different tax district. And then the personal property is for Subway that is closing in Walmart store.
Do these need done separately?
I think so, because one's real and one's personal.
Okay. So, on the personal property, it's for K.A. and D.E. Incorporated at One Ten First Street, Sutherland, Nebraska. It's to accelerate the 2025 personal property taxes.
Okay, so I misspoke. That's the Subway in Sutherland, not the one in Walmart. I'm sorry.
Yeah. For, the business closed March of 2025. It was a Subway sandwich shop, 2025 value and a 2024 levy. It is property ID two four five zero four, and it looks like the total tax will be $237.02.
Make a motion, authorize, sign that certificate correction as just read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Didn't we just do this Subway a couple of months ago, the one in the mall, right?
Walmart?
Walmart, yeah.
Yep, that's where I was thinking, wrong.
And where was this one?
Sutherland.
Sutherland, right there on Highway thirty.
Highway thirty.
Yeah.
North Prairie Trace. The next one is for real estate. It is for Philip and Susan Warwick, Warwick. At twenty-three five ninety-five North Lehman Road, Stapleton, Nebraska. Accelerate taxes on a nineteen seventy-five mobile home fourteen by seventy. The ID is two four zero zero four, and the total tax is $411.68.
Make a motion, authorize, sign that certificate correction and the refund as just read.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. Next, we will have the motor vehicle tax exemption application is submitted by the County Treasurer, Sherri Newton.
I have a question before I make a motion, if I might.
Sherri, would you like to come up, please?
She said no, but I will.
I will.
People's Family Health Services, Inc., what is that?
They help.
Sherri, if you'd like to sign in and announce yourself. Lincoln County Treasurer.
They help other customers with their health. They give them traveling and all that. They get them to doctor's appointments.
So, so it's a nonprofit that, on South Elm, that assists and if they need a medical appointment or something, that's from there.
I believe they also manage the Women Infant and Children's Program.
I believe so.
For Lincoln County.
Okay. Be my motion that we approve the application for exemption for People's Family Health Services Incorporated for a 2014 Toyota van. It's used for services and provide training and travel for their clients. Recommended for approval by Sherri Newton, the Lincoln County Treasurer. Be my motion to accept that and approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
I've heard of them, but I've never really knew what they were.
Yeah, they do a lot of good for people that need it.
They really do.
Form four fifty-seven for Two Rivers Fellowship here in North Platte. They, they are stating they are a religious organization, and they are asking for an exemption on a 2024 year model year GMC Savannah van. They note that this van's used for church purposes only, transporting to and from church events and mission trips. It's been reviewed by County Treasurer Sherri Newton. Recommended for approval, my motion would be to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye. I thank you, Sherri.
The final item for Board of Equalization is a Property Valuation Change Notices, Number 2025-001 to 2025-004 is submitted by the County Assessor Julie Stinger.
Good morning, Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. These are some county board changes that need to come before you. There's four of them. The first one's on a mobile home that I think originally we had information that it was going to be tore down or moved, and on further inspection, it had not been. So, we put it back on the tax rolls for this year. And then the other three were either a taxable entity purchased by an exempt entity now, and as long as that's done before levy date, it either goes back on the tax rolls or comes off. So, the first two were purchases by the city of North Platte, so they will become exempt. And the third one was exempt, but is being purchased by the redevelopment, community redevelopment of Village of Sutherland, and that is a taxable entity. So, that will go back on the tax rolls for twenty twenty-five.
Julie, I have a question. The last three, or the two in the middle of the city of North Platte, is that part of their process of buying some of the old properties back, you know?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm looking at the pictures. Not sure why the city purchased them. I'm thinking it probably, let me read them out and see what kind of shape they're in.
Because I don't think they'd want to get in a business so big and.
Okay, yes, that is, because this, the one was a fire. So, yes, and the other one looks pretty bad, too, I guess. Yeah, this one was a sheriff's sale that was in really, really poor condition. So, yes, I'm assuming that's probably why the city is, is doing that and will either fix them up or demo them. I think that is part of their process that they're doing. So, I'm not sure Judy knows more on that than I do.
Judy, would you like to come up and announce yourself and sign in?
Judy Clark, Planning and Zoning Administrator for the county and Development Director for this city. So, these are two properties. What's this address, do you know?
It's like fourteen eighteen West fourteen.
Yeah. These are two properties that are in a program that the city got into with the state of Nebraska, which is purchasing really, really dilapidated properties. A lot of times they're properties that have issues with title. For example, somebody may be a deceased individual, and everybody just has struggles trying to get clear title. And so, part of the program, what we do is we purchase those, demolish them.
Mostly.
Depending on what the condition of the home is, and then prepare it to, for future development. And so, the plan is to then sell those properties at a reasonable cost. The city will lose money because we're not going to try and recoup the cost for demolition or anything like that.
So, the first property, the, when it read Cedars, it was supposed to be torn down, but now it's back on the tax roll. Was that part of the same process, I wonder?
I don't believe so.
No, no.
Because that's a pretty good, that's thirty-one thousand, basically.
That, that one was not purchased by the city, just the mill?
No, but I mean, I wonder if it was originally supposed to be part of that program and didn't. Because it's not owned by an owner, it's owned by a Rice Homes out of Nashville or Maryville, Tennessee.
No, we were notified that they were going to move it off of that lot, and then it did not get moved off of that lot.
Okay.
Judy, and I know that it's been in the news, how many, how many properties has the city actually gone through and purchased through that program so far?
Right now, I think we've officially, oh, you're going to catch me off-guard. I think we've officially purchased four. The grant requires us to purchase twelve. We're hoping to be able to do more than that. And again, we don't compete with the general public. We get those properties that other individuals just are not interested because of the cost and, and time trying to clear title.
Are there any other questions?
Long-term, long-term being that there's going to be affordable housing or accessible housing built.
Yes.
Or remodeled on those lots, which will improve the property values.
That is a requirement of the grant. Whoever then ultimately ends up purchasing that has to either build a owner occupied structure or they can build a rental, but those price points have to meet what is considered affordable housing.
Can improve the appearance of the area.
Hundred percent.
And, and increase the property value.
Exactly.
It's, it's a good program from my perspective, yes.
I just wish it could go a little bit quicker, but those properties take a lot of time.
Sheriff, you ready for motion?
I am ready for a motion.
I'd move that we approve the valuation change notices numbered twenty-two-five dash oh one through twenty-two-five dash oh four is submitted by the county assessor.
Second.
Do we need to read these into record, Julie, with the, with the parcel number and all the valuation?
I think as long as you read the one through four.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners at nine forty-five. Thank you. Our next agenda item is discuss and consider authorizing the chair to sign the contract with Western Engineering for project LC DOR twenty-two-five dash zero one.
So I actually had this put on. This is the contract that I prepared for our big overlay project. I sent it off to Western, they have executed it and sent it back. This is the same contract we've had with them for the last three years, only the dates and amounts have been changed.
And this is for the asphalt projects around the subdivisions, both north and south of town, no?
That one will come to Shoko. That's, I believe Shoko has that right now in the review.
This is the remainder of North River Room.
This is Suburban.
Yep.
And North Prairie.
Yep.
This is the big project.
Oh, okay, North River, Suburban.
Chair, if you're ready.
And North Prairie. I am.
Madam Chair, it would be my motion that we approve and authorize your signature on the contract with Western Engineering for project LC DOR twenty-two-five dash zero one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Just for the record, this is for one million eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Any other discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Burns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Madam Chair, would be sure to recognize Assistant Highway Superintendent Brian Boss, who just came to room. I've missed him here lately.
We've been worried about you, Brian.
Sorry, I'm late.
Welcome, I just wanted to acknowledge. Bad roads, huh? Traffic problem.
I would imagine the rain has both presented some challenges and some benefit moving forward for the road department.
It's mostly good.
Yep, mostly good. It's, it's improved some attitudes at my house, for sure.
Tell you what, at least you can work the road now, can't you? You know, I just noticed the first, probably four or five of those had a North Platte address for weeks. That one had a Grand Island, I assume it's the same thing, but I'm curious why they have different addresses. Might have shipped from a different branch.
It is nine fifty. The agenda item at this time is an update by Paul Ottinger concerning the annexation of Powell's Brewing Company property by the city of North Platte. I don't know, Becky, who put this on the agenda?
Paul.
Paul?
Paul King asked for just a few minutes, I know he wanted, I just, I gotta. Do we just put you on speakerphone?
Can we do that, Tyler?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's your problem, Chair.
Decisions, decisions, of course.
Okay, I'll talk to you after the meeting today, okay, thanks, Paul. That's okay. He forgot.
Okay, he didn't want to speak to us on speakerphone?
No.
Okay, very good.
It's nothing bad, it really is nothing bad, he just wanted to personally do something.
Okay, well, he can.
He wants to come in next week.
Okay. Very good, we are going to table that item until next week.
He's sitting in his camper, he's like, I have nothing on my calendar, I forgot.
It happens, holiday weekends mess everything up.
Yeah, today's Monday, it's not.
Does the laptop need to be open?
No, connecting does not.
We've been having a lot of trouble with anything trying to. A bunch of those would have trouble too.
But Julie might.
Connecting, getting the, like, the. Presentations to.
Are, are we thinking it's a?
Joe, do you happen to be in the building?
We just have technology, I don't.
We'll find out.
I'm having trouble getting connecting, I was supposed to have a team's meeting here during the commissioner meeting. At ten.
We need pirate paint, then.
He did one of the ones up some one day. He was here one day.
Is that supposed to be Meg or Mason?
Yeah.
It is nine fifty-five. Our item at this time is discuss and consider incorporating NACO, Nebraska Association of County Officials, and NACO, the National Association of Counties dues starting in July of twenty-twenty-five. I'm the one that had this put on the agenda at our April twenty-twenty-four NACO, Nebraska NACO board meeting. The board asked the NACO staff to explore ways of trying to increase Nebraska counties' membership into National NACO and assist National NACO in reducing the amount of investment they have to make in the billing process for the counties that are members. And so John and Candace and their staff explored it and they had a meeting with National NACO and it was determined that Nebraska NACO could help maximize efficiencies and reduce billing hours. And it would also assist with us encouraging other Nebraska counties to join the National NACO organization. So John asked us to put this on our agendas and get board approval so that Nebraska NACO would be able to send the National NACO invoice out with the Nebraska invoices. They will be sectioned out in two separate parts, but we will pay it with, with one payment. And then Nebraska NACO will forward those monies on to National NACO. So. Do you have any, there will be, the benefit of doing this is they are offering a five percent discount on, I believe it was the first half dues. Yep, the billings come out in August and December. And so we would receive a five percent discount on the national dues, which are just billed in with ours if you guys give approval to do that.
We are a member of the national?
We are a member of the national.
There's only a few counties in the state that are not.
Yeah, I think.
And we've been working really hard to try to encourage them to gain membership into the national. If we get membership in, if we have a hundred percent of Nebraska counties, all ninety-three, join the National Association of Counties, we get much larger voice at the national level as a state in representing, representation on the board. It truly is a benefit for the state of Nebraska and what we're, what we're trying to accomplish.
And I didn't bring those numbers with me, Chris, but you're exactly right. I think out of the ninety-three counties, there's like eighty-four or maybe even eighty-nine now, so we're very close. But if we get all of the counties, that gives us an extra seat on the board of directors for that. So there is a benefit for us all to champion. If, if you know a county who doesn't belong to the National Association, please help us out in encouraging them to do so because there are great benefits. I know I serve on a subcommittee for the National NACO. Chris, you're on one or two?
I'm on three, actually. Rule Action Caucus, the Community Economic and Workforce Development. And then I am a vice chair on the International Trade Task Force, so.
And I'm on the PN Three Task Force. And so having people from Nebraska serve on those committees, you know, it helps us communicate the needs and the challenges that Nebraska deals with. And I know for the board I sit on, the other counties, when we come together, appreciate hearing from Nebraska on, on many different levels, but, and it's nice that they're offering the five percent discount to encourage this transition, so. If there are no other questions, I would seek a motion.
Madam Chair, it would be my motion that we approve, is there a signature in there or just by motion?
Just by motion.
Okay. That we approve incorporating the Nebraska Association of County Officials and the National Association of Counties separate dues into one payment starting July of twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Burns?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Tammy, I'll take care of notifying John of what the vote was, Becky also. Did you receive that email, too?
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll just respond to the email that he sent out.
Remember, it was not that many years ago when we, there probably was only about half the counties that were members of National NACO. I know there's been a real concerted effort, but I, I think that's something, obviously, that John and Candace need to work with the board of making some individual visits along with some board members to get that over the hill.
I will pass that suggestion on.
I like the discount.
We might be talking about it at our county board meeting in June.
It is maybe a little bit more of a challenge for rural areas like Nebraska because we do, we're rural in nature and we have so many counties, you know? Both of those are, make it a little bit tougher.
The National Association's dues are very reasonable and, and affordable. It's based off of population or something, you know, so. I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but if you need to know anything about any county that's a dues paying member of the National Association, you go to their website and you can. that's a dues-paying member of the National Association, you go to their website and you can, uh, search and it'll bring up incredible data.
NACO Edge?
Yep.
That is a phenomenal...
I mean, it, it has childcare provider data for your county in there and, um, housing, just about anything, um, number of jobs, yeah. There's, there's a load of information in there, they do a good job in compiling all that.
There was a, one certain, Suburban, it's a repair shop or something, I guess.
Neither.
We're gonna have to reboot the computer to get it to work.
Make it on the side of the street, which...
If you're watching on our YouTube channel, we are gonna do a reboot so we can bring up, uh, some information on our big screen. We'll be right back.